All right, good morning. Welcome to the October 8th Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with the roll call.
Surizer Brandal.
Here.
Surizer Mendez.
Here.
Surizer Pacheco.
Here.
Surizer Quintero.
Here.
Surizer Magsig.
And I am here.
All present, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, and this is going to be led by District 4. So I turn that over to Buddy Mendez at this time.
Okay. It's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Jacob Zalian, Lead Pastor of the Free Church in Sanger. Pastor Zalian and his wife Francine launched the Sanger Chapter of Set Free in 2019. This church focuses on being a haven for bikers, recovering addicts, and those struggling with criminality. But all are welcome, and I'm very happy to introduce you and welcome Pastor Zalian.
Thank you. Lord, we come to you. You are the King of the universe. You are the one who created the heavens and the earth. You hold all things together. You are the one who sits upon the throne. So Father, I ask today that you help guide our city, our county, our state, and for our leadership, Lord, I pray that you lead them and that you protect them and you help them to be people who are lovers of truth in a world full of lies. Father, we know that your word is truth, for your word is a lamp unto our feet and a light unto our path. So, Lord, I plead and I pray that we come back to the God of our forefathers, the fathers who established one nation under God. And we know that you are the God of the Bible, so, Lord, help us come back to our roots. Father, we ask all this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, the one who defeated death and the grave and sits upon the throne. Amen.
You want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Lord, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number one, approve agenda.
Board members wishing to make modifications to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a modification, but I wanted to let the public know that I'm going to recuse myself from item number nine.
Item number nine?
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you. Yes, Sal.
I also will have to recuse myself from number nine.
Okay, understood. Thank you for making that known. Seeing no further modifications or comments, we've got a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda items numbers 21 through 45. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 40, under probation, is deleted and will return to your board October 22nd.
Excellent. I'm going to ask that item 34 and 36 be polled. Any other items board members would like to have polled besides 34 and 36? Seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment or poll any of the consent agenda items? Please step forward now. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval of the remainder. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously.
Items 34 and 36 will be heard following item four. We now move to item number three, under Chairman Magsig, proclaim October 8th as Pink Day and October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Fresno County.
All right, and we have some representatives here to present, and I will turn the floor over at this time.
Good morning, board members. My name is Davona Youngblood. I'm the Human Resource Manager here at County of Fresno, and I have with me Matthew Wilfong, Senior, sorry, Human Resource Analyst with County of Fresno. In the United States alone, more than 300,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women in 2024, with about 80% of those diagnoses coming from women over the age of 50. With 1 in 7 women developing the disease in their lifetime, mind you, last year it was 1 in 8, breast cancer is something that affects us all. We would like to stress the importance and value of early detection of breast cancer and the positive impact this has on successful outcomes. Taking the time to learn the early signs can be a first step in protecting yourself. This month, we would like to encourage everyone to get involved, use resources in the county newsletters, and from health carriers to educate yourself, donate to organizations that are dedicating to fighting back against breast cancer, and to take the time to go to your doctor for your annual checkups. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Mary Ann from Sisterhood of Survivors who would like to share.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, staff. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present some information to you today. I'd like to present two of our board members, the Sisterhood of Survivors today, Marilyn, Marilyn Orden, who was diagnosed in 2017, is a seven-year survivor, and Cindy Jamison, who was diagnosed 2006 and 2016, and is an eight-year survivor. And I am Mary Ann Rogazinski, and I'm a 19-year survivor, and I worked for the county when I was diagnosed. Let me tell you a little bit about Sisterhood of Survivors. In the spring of 2002, two women came together during their breast cancer journey and decided to meet for lunch after they finished their treatment. Unfortunately, by the time that time came, the group grew to six. By the time they met, oh, sorry, Sisterhood of Survivors became incorporated in 2010 after the group grew. We deliver these totes to recently diagnosed patients. It includes education materials and other personal items that newly diagnosed may need during their journey. And this tote is delivered only by a survivor, so that that survivor has a chance to talk to those recently diagnosed, so they can go through their journey and let them know what they can expect and answer any questions they may have. In addition to delivering totes, we facilitate a monthly meeting held on the third Saturday of every month. This month, the luncheon is on October 19th at the Marie Callens Restaurant at the corner of Shaw and Cedar, and it's at 12 noon. We invite all breast cancer patients, survivors, family members, and supporters to the luncheon. We also partner with other organizations in the community, such as Central California Women's Conference, which we attended last month, and we want to remind all county employees of the importance of annual exams, early detection, and our services. So now I'd like to leave you with our brochure, and thank you for highlighting October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you again.
And Mary Ann, we'll have you come forward in just a minute. Do you have anyone else from your group who is going to speak?
Our two board members.
Excellent.
And then another survivor that's with us today.
All right.
Hi, I'm Eloise Gilbert, and I'm actually a Fresno County employee also, and I'm a breast cancer survivor for eight years now, and I can tell you, this bag and all the contents in it helped me go through that journey. And I encourage anybody and everybody that knows somebody that's experiencing breast cancer, or they themselves are doing it, to contact the Sisterhood of Survivors. They're a wonderful support group. Thank you.
Do I address? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to have you all actually come forward in a minute, because we're going to give you a proclamation that we're going to approve, but I know that some of our board members have a few comments, because I know that breast cancer is something which has impacted, I know it's impacted me, and I'm going to share about that, but any board members wishing to make some comments before we vote on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think the tote idea is really wonderful, and the fact, I mean, because if you think about it, somebody's going through a lot of fear, anxiety, all those types of issues, and then here you guys come with a tote, and somebody who survived to deliver that tote, I think it's a wonderful way of supporting the people, and that's just the tip of the iceberg for the things that you guys do. So I do appreciate that work.
My chief of staff, Vicki Day, is actually a 25-year survivor, still here working.
My grandmother passed away of cancer, but she was a breast cancer survivor in the 1960s, which was very rare. And my mom actually just finished her final radiation treatment in July, and she has breast cancer, so she is a couple-month survivor at this point. But appreciate what you guys do and the fact that you come alongside individuals who are going through that scary time, providing encouragement, sharing stories. There's not a better ambassador than all of you, so thank you for doing that. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. I'll make a motion for approval of this proclamation. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That passes unanimously. If I could have you come forward, we'd like to get a picture with you, and I have this proclamation for you.
Violence Awareness Month in Fresno County.
And I believe we have a couple representatives from Marjorie Mason Center and Central La Familia here. If you could come forward and just share with us a little bit, that'd be great.
So my name is Martina. I work with Central La Familia Advocacy Services, and first and foremost, I want to thank you all for giving us the space to be here and to receive this proclamation. A little background is domestic violence happens everywhere, and it's not just a form of physical violence, it's also mental, psychological. And one of the things that a lot of families think is that it's just physical. And so with prevention and education, we're able to safety plan with a lot of our families and educate on the importance of reporting to law enforcement. I'd like to share what, how many clients we've seen in the last fiscal year. We're a team of 10, and so during the last fiscal year, we saw 182 new families that were assessed for victim services because they were victims of domestic violence. We saw 1,580 existing families, and the number of times these individuals came for services during the last fiscal year was around 2,462 times. This is something that is not going away, but if we, like I mentioned, it's all about education, prevention, we can minimize that, and also with all of our partners here in Fresno County, like Marjorie Mason Center, CCLS, Crime Victim Assistance Center, together we're all able to provide the best service for all of our families. And I have Kendi here, who's also going to share a couple of items, things of our activities that we're going to be doing this month as well.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. And before I go on into what we have planned, I wanted to do a little activity. So everyone here, raise your hand if you know somebody who has been a victim of domestic violence or has been impacted by domestic violence. As you can see, everyone knows someone. Everyone knows a sister, a mother, a brother, a comadre, a friend, an abuela, I can go on. Everyone in our Fresno County knows somebody, and it is a community issue that only as a community we can come together and prevent it from continuing. So here at Central La Familia, it's not what we're doing, it's how we're doing it and providing culturally specific services to our community members. We have our support groups, we have our direct services, which include court accompaniment, which include navigating the clients or the survivors through these complex issues. So thank you for the support, thank you for having us here, and thank you to our community partners for helping us come together for this issue. Thank you.
There's a lot of other guests here today, so I'm going to ask, most of the department heads from the county are here, two of which serve on the Marjorie Mason Center board. You didn't need to sit down, Central La Familia, so come on up. So thank you for this opportunity to recognize and highlight Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'm Nicole Linder, CEO of the Marjorie Mason Center, right here with Ashley Wolf, our Director of Philanthropy and Communication. On behalf of the entire Board of Directors, I just want to thank you for recognizing this month. Along with Breast Cancer Awareness Month, as we say, it's a bonus, not a competition. During this month, it's a time to reflect on the critical issue of domestic violence and renew our commitment to supporting survivors and work towards prevention. As Kendi mentioned earlier, it affects millions of people across the nation, transcending age, race, and socioeconomic status. Some of our activities this month include our Top 10 Professional Women and Leading Business Awards, which will happen next week. We've invited national speakers, Mark and Danielle Herslich. Danielle is a survivor of child abuse and domestic violence, her husband, former NFL player, and they're going to talk about what it means to have a healthy relationship and what are those components and how to switch that lens. Purple Thursday, a national day to wear purple, is October 17th, and the city of Reedley will be hosting a prayer vigil in downtown Reedley at 10 o'clock on that same day. According to the California Department of Justice, Fresno County continues to have the highest per capita calls to law enforcement for domestic violence compared to any other county in the state. At the Marjorie Mason Center, our 24/7 confidential hotline is averaging 800 to 900 calls a month. Last year, we launched in January of 2023 a domestic violence data dashboard. It was a pet project but has turned into a valuable resource after a pilot period from Reedley PD in 2022. It exports law enforcement statistics from all of the departments in Fresno County. They're not our numbers, they come from law enforcements because there's no overlap. And it's updated quarterly, and it's found on the main page of our website. I know some of you have been able to find it. It's searchable by many different fields, including the cities for which you represent. Since January of 2023, there have been 12,302 unique reports with 26,000 victims. 76% of the survivors identify as female, while 23% identify as male. 32% of the survivors are aged 25 to 34, however, male victims are much more younger, with 36% under the age of 25 and 25% under the age of 18. 45% of them were in a dating or former dating relationship compared to 12% considering themselves married. And then victims who are the ages 13 to 19 are in a dating relationship, but that group is 1.7x more likely to experience physical violence and 6.5x more likely to experience sexual assault. I want to give a quick update on the new Marjorie Mason Center Community Resource Center. We are 10 weeks shy, less than 10 weeks, of completion of December 13th. Currently, towards our $21 million goal, we have raised $17.7 million, and we're really excited to finish that to completion. And I want to give a huge thank you to the county for stepping up and contributing in a big way of your ARPA dollars to that project, because it really inspired local philanthropists to also contribute in a large way. Our No More Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program, we're currently in 52 Fresno County high schools and middle schools, all of Fresno Unified, Mendota, Kalinga Huron Unified, Fowler, Kings Canyon, Parlier, and Sanger, all talking about healthy relationships and the components of teen dating violence and how teens can have healthier relationships. So this October, I encourage you and others to get involved. There are ways, things you can do at home, at school, and at work, on social media. There is a Domestic Violence Awareness Month guide on our website for a whole host of activities. Thank you.
Sorry, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. You guys are, look amazing. Well, there we go. We've got a speaker.
I think I'm getting pushed up to the podium. I just want to thank the board for this recognition today, and I want to compliment both Central La Familia and the Marjorie Mason Center and so many other NGOs in this community for doing what they do. As Nicole said, Fresno County has the highest per capita reporting to law enforcement regarding domestic violence. And although that is, you know, normally something that people who, like me, who work in law enforcement think, oh, gosh, we're the worst again, you know what? In this sense, it is my very humble opinion, after doing this work for 28 years, that that's really something that we should be proud of, in the sense that people report here. And there is so much domestic violence that goes unreported in other communities, it doesn't mean it's not happening in those other communities. It means that we have police departments, we have a sheriff's department, we have a district attorney's office, a probation department, Department of Behavioral Health, Social Services, DSS, probation, the health department, we are all working together to combat this. We are not afraid to say that domestic violence is a problem, and many of us deal with different populations. You can look at all the law enforcement numbers you want, many of those people never go to the Marjorie Mason Center. There are people that go to Central La Familia that never come through us. Again, same with the Marjorie Mason Center. Many victims in the Marjorie Mason Center have never reported to law enforcement. And so for us to just look at the law enforcement numbers is looking at one iota of the people that are affected. Some people go to their churches, some people go to their counselors, some people go to reach out to have, get other services through other county departments that we never see in the court system. And so I am so proud of this county, I am so proud of the people that stand here with me. I've been a domestic violence prosecutor for many, many years, spent the lion's share of my career doing that work, and it is so rewarding to see families reunited, to see offenders get better, to see victims get stronger, because when we have stronger families, we have a better community. So thank you for your support, and thank you to all my colleagues standing behind me.
Want to thank the Board of Supervisors and Chairman Magsig for making this proclamation. We've heard from Lisa Smithcamp, we've heard from Nicole Linder. I will say that the sheriff's office, not a day goes by where we don't respond to a call involving domestic violence. And it is a sad fact in our community that this occurs daily, just in the county of Fresno, in the areas that we're responsible for, not including any other police departments like Fresno and Clovis. And some of these calls are very violent, and bringing awareness to it is so important because we have to make some changes, we have to figure out how we can reduce incidents of domestic violence. And I think what Nicole said was very important. We have this prevention program in 52 schools, high schools throughout Fresno County, and I think that's important, because we all need to know that some of this stuff starts very young, and how we can prevention and intervention and get on top of it and let victims know that they are victims, even if you're 16 or 17 years old, in a dating relationship with someone else who is a minor. Just in this past week, talking about calls for service that we've had, these calls occur in the city of Fresno, near McLean High School, was significant domestic violence crimes, and one we had the other night was out near Mendota Wildlife Refuge, out in the middle of nowhere, in a trailer, where the individual, the female, was almost killed in a domestic violence incident, and the suspect was arrested for attempt homicide. But they're significant, they're serious, and they occur everywhere, in every neighborhood, in every walk of life. So thank you again for bringing awareness to this and having the Domestic Violence Proclamation today here at the Board of Supervisors.
Good morning, board. Kirk Haynes, your Chief Probation Officer. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Fresno County Probation Department to Marjorie Mason Center, Nicole, and also Central La Familia, who all presented here today. And it is true that domestic violence is such a pervasive problem in the Fresno County that we couldn't do the work that we do for victims at the James Rowland Crime Victims Assistance Center without the support like Marjorie Mason and Central to provide housing, emergency housing, they're available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And so it just is a huge, huge service for those victims who are enduring probably the worst days of their lives, and so I just want to say thank you here publicly for the fantastic work that they do on behalf of victims. Say thank you. And also thank you for the board for recognizing the work today.
Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board. Any board members have some, any additional comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you can see six of our department heads standing here today. So there's a great commitment in Fresno County to tackle this issue, which I appreciate. But apart from our department heads, I do want to recognize the fantastic work that's being done by Marjorie Mason Center and Central La Familia. You know, in Fresno County, we have dozens and dozens of partnerships to make sure all of this work gets done, and these are two of the very best, and so I appreciate all that hard work.
All right, I think this entire board echoes that, and we appreciate all that all of our departments do, working hard to help victims and then also help the offenders as well, so they can get better. So that is also a key theme today. So with that, I will make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Please step forward. I have two proclamations, one for Marjorie Mason Center and one for Central La Familia. So please come forward so we can get a picture with all of you.
Item 34, which was pulled by Surizer Chairman Magsig, under Human Resources, approves the biweekly premiums for active employees and dependents for Plan Year 2025.
And with that, I wanted to pull this item, because it's, both item 34 and 36 are pretty significant. And so Hollis, I don't need a full-blown presentation on this, but this has to do with really our health plan, and Fresno County is part of what's called the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. We partner with Tulare County, and through that, we provide insurance to both Tulare County employees and Fresno County employees. But what I really wanted to highlight with this particular item is looking at the rates for next year, they're going to be pretty stable. So right now, with just incredible inflation, we've seen insurance rates, health insurance rates for a lot of other people, a lot of other businesses, go up 10%, 15%, 20%. For our Anthem Blue Cross plans, our EPO plans, and our high deductible Anthem Blue Cross plans, there is no increase for our employees. There is an increase for our Kaiser HMO and Kaiser High Deductible Health Plan between 8.2% and 6.8%, which is still modest compared to what's going on in the rest of the state of California and even the United States. So I wanted to pull this item to highlight it, because while employees here in Fresno County, while we're all being challenged because of increasing we have in place, and just the cash position, right now, we're, we have about $35 million. We're cash positive now in that insurance authority from being negative over $10 million. So again, staff, this Board, I think the fiscal prudence and the leadership that we've had from our consultants and all of you has allowed us to really turn that ship around. So that, to me, that needs to be celebrated. So anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I'll move for approval of item 34.
Motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
We now take up item 36, which was pulled by Chairman Magsick under HR, approve the county health premium contribution for Plan Year 2025 for unrepresentative management classifications.
So again, this item parallels item 34 a little bit. Hollis, do you want to talk about the significance of this? Because I mean, having unity with our different bargaining units, I think, is very important. So if you just want to do a quick, high-level review on this item, and then we can get to voting.
No, absolutely. And I would like to actually take a moment to highlight, especially with the family cost, that your Board has put a tremendous amount of resources towards our family coverage. So back in 2021, the cost to cover a family was $541.91 a pay period. That was a pay period. But now, with our increase and with what we've done with the health insurance, that cost has gone down to $98.51. So that's a savings of over $450 a pay period, over $11,000 a year. So I want the employees of the county to realize how amazing that we have come with our health insurance, and then with working with our labor partners. With me is Dawn Harris, she's the Program Manager for Labor Relations. So our current county contribution is going up to $458, if you approve it, for employees, for spouse and children, that's $718, and for family, that's $903 a pay period. This is an amazing amount of money and resources your Board has put towards our health insurance to make it affordable for our employees. So thank you so much for that. Dawn, if there's anything?
Yes, very quickly. I'm Dawn Harris, I'm the Program Manager for Labor. I just wanted to say, as one of your new highly, new hired managers here at the county, it was a pleasure to be able to sit across our, the table from our labor leaders and continue to, your efforts in offering and providing our employees with affordable health care. That is amazing, and I thank you for that.
Any questions for staff? Again, I just wanted this to be highlighted, I didn't want it to go quietly on consent because the work of our staff and what we're doing here at the county, this is something that needs to be celebrated. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the Board for approval.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously.
I know when one has a good tune, too, one should toot their horn.
That concludes all consent items. We return to your regular agenda. Item number five, under Superior Brandow and Superior Pacheco, adopt resolution to repeal Resolution 21-247 and implement Public Works and Planning Policy Traffic Calming Measures Speed Pumps as a Two-Year Pilot Program.
And Supervisor Brandow and Pacheco, all, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a real, a real simple ordinance and measure, which, it has to do with speed bumps. And in recent years, I've got, my district has been getting more demand for speed bumps. Now, it's really odd because nobody really likes them. I live on a street with two speed bumps, and I don't like going over them. But in our society, we're seeing a lot more people starting to speed through neighborhoods. And this puts children at danger, and it puts the public at danger. And so Fresno County has, is currently have a ban on speed bumps. So we wanted to look at it afresh, a new way, and create a pilot program that would allow speed bumps on certain types of streets to be applicable to Fresno County. And so I want to go back to my residents and say, if you want to create a partnership with Fresno County, we can get a speed bump on your street if it, if it works out. And so I found out that Supervisor Pacheco also has some similar requests from his constituents. And so what we did is we turned to Public Works and Planning and asked them to help us get this done. They're right in the middle of an even bigger traffic calming measures program. But we, first, we needed to reverse the ban that we currently have on speed bumps, and then create a pilot program to let it go forward. So Supervisor Pacheco?
Well, thank you Supervisor Brandow, thought you did an excellent job outlining the program, but he's absolutely right. Several years ago, as a Board member, I voted to not have this anymore, due to public safety and all the inconveniences that some people have. However, as Supervisor Brandow stated, there are roads in our communities that our constituents are asking for this, and I feel as a representative, we should deliver what the people want in their neighborhoods. I believe the people should have the greatest control in their neighborhoods, and if they're asking for this, we should provide a mechanism for that. So that's why today I'm willing to reverse the decision that I made several years ago to try and please our constituent needs and give them the support that they need for our ever-changing society. So with that, I would go to Public Works, who's going to implement the project, and tell us how to do it.
Thank you Supervisor Chairman, Board Member Steve White, Public Works and Planning Director. So this is one of the tools we're going to be putting in your toolbox called Traffic Calming. It'll be coming back to you this calendar year. Each of you has talked to us about challenges you have in your district, and we're trying to put components in that that are not traffic control-related. As you are aware, we can't always put stop signs in key locations because they don't make the warrants. But what we can do through these kind of policy actions is put traffic calming elements. This is just one of the tools. We're not going to go to the asphalt type of speed bumps many of you have seen throughout the communities. We're going to go to the pre-manufactured ones. So if they had to come out, they can move out. We're also going to be working on a presentation to you that's called Safe Streets for All. We were very successful, we got about $1.9 million. That's the bigger policy issue that Supervisor Brandow is talking about. So with your Board action today, we'll start implementing this immediately. And the key element of this one, you have to have certain constraints within your neighborhoods to be able to apply for this. And if this one doesn't apply, then we'll pick another tool. Right now, we're working with Supervisor Magsick's office about putting a traffic circle at an intersection up in his district that is a pre-manufactured device. So the goal is to put as many tools in the toolbox as we can to be able to deploy them when we have the need to do them. And this one requires that the public pay for at least half of the cost of doing it, but the key is, it will last longer, and we can remove it if we ever want to. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Seth? Yes, please.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Steve. And the, I've just got a couple of questions, just as a concern. One is that, and we experienced this when we started putting speed bumps in the, in city, in the city of Fresno on neighborhood streets. What we experienced was that when there's an emergency in the neighborhood, whether it's the police having to respond, the fire department, or an emergency service, an ambulance, will there be any signs posted on that street close to the speed bump warning? Because during the foggy season and the rainy season, it gets pretty difficult, especially if you have a lot of cars parked on the street.
Yes, there will. We'll have advanced warning signs on each side, east direction, bump ahead, and the like. But we'll also be picking a speed bump a little different than what Fresno uses. I call them Mount Everest, I go over one every morning on the way in. You climb the mountain, you come down the mountain, that does not create a functional speed bump. It really just angers people, and they just speed up after it. And Supervisor Magsick, I'll refer back, remember the one we put over at the speed table at the Old Town Trail Crossing there on Fifth Street? We had to go back and modify that for Safety Services reasons. They could not go over the top, but it's very functional, very practical. Bicyclists can get over it, all parties can get across it. So we're going to use the pre-manufactured ones, like you see in many of the parking lots, the Safety Services, we're not going to have a problem with. We'll be working directly with Fresno County Fire Protection, getting their feedback on those devices. We don't want to put anything out that it slows down by seconds, the response time for emergency services at any point at any time. Advanced warning signs, implementation and placement of this is very, very important. You want to make sure people see them as you come unto them, the sight distance issues are not going to be a problem. The neighborhoods have to agree. Some people, I don't want it in front of my home because you have to park your car on it. We're going to try and come up with a plan that is common sense-based. That means this is what we're going to do, and here's how we're going to do it. And the beauty of it is, you pull some pins, you move them down the street, you put them back in, that simple, that easy.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to this body for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to highlight one or two other items, and Steve did a fantastic job. He talked about a partnership with the neighborhood. So this would be splitting the cost. A neighborhood that desires a speed bump would have to first make an application. That would require 80% approval of the, of the neighborhood where the speed bump is being put in. And then that would take an official vote after that, would also require an 80% threshold. So we don't believe these are just going to go in willy-nilly, and Fresno County's not going to pay the full price tag and just hope that it works. It's going to be partnerships with neighborhoods. And so they'll, they'll be paying half the cost, and they have to have 80% of their neighbors agree with them on that speed bump. So I thought that was important, I think the public needs to know about that, and so we're really excited to try this pilot program. And like Steve said, if it doesn't work, these speed bumps can be easily removed. I do want to thank Steve and his team on Public Works and Planning, Sam Buck and Sal Espino from the CAO's office, my Chief of Staff, Robert Jeffers, and Supervisor Pacheco's team as well. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Chair, a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number six, under the Board of Supervisors, appoint a member and alternate member of the Board of Supervisors to the California State Association of Counties and Councilor, CSEAC Board of Directors for a one-year term, 24-25, and appoint a member and one or two alternate members of the Board of Supervisors to the Urban Counties of California Coalition Board of Directors for a two-year term, 2025 through 2026, and direct the clerk of the Board to provide notification to CSEAC and UCC.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. This item before you, today, will appoint one member of your Board and one alternate to represent Fresno County on the CSEAC and UCC Board of Directors. These organizations bring a collaborative approach between counties and create a collective voice to advocate for counties on key legislative issues at the state level. The CSEAC appointment will commence on November 18th to coincide with the annual meeting, and the UCC appointment will begin the calendar year January 1st. Supervisor Mendez is the current appointment, with Chairman as the alternate. Please note that UCC, that appointment includes a second alternate, and staff recommends designate CEO Paul Nerland or his designee to fill that position. I'm available for any questions if you may have them.
Since there's two alternates, you would, right now, I think I'm Buddy's alternate, but you're suggesting that Paul Nerland be the second alternate or his designee?
Yes, he has been in the past, and this recent year, he has not been.
Perfect. Yeah, I have no issue with that.
Yeah, it's kind of important on the Urban County Caucus, because a lot of times in their meetings, they actually barely can make a quorum, because sometimes LA County and San Francisco County are too important to participate in the meeting. So you're down two votes right off the bat a lot of times. So it is kind of important that we do have a designee who actually can vote.
Agreed. Any questions on that? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I would recommend that Buddy stay the voting member for both CSEAC and UCC. I'm happy to remain his alternate for CSEAC and UCC. I think it's a good idea for Paul and his office to be the added alternate for UCC. But if any other members feel strongly about wanting to be an alternate, I'm happy to give up my spot and allow someone else to be an alternate, if that's what anyone else wants.
Motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion for what was stated, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
I kind of felt like the, yeah, there you go. See, he was the only one that's old enough to remember that.
We now move to item number seven, under the Administrative Office, adopt resolution which establishes the county Fresno policy for resolution of temporary encampments on public and private property.
Amina Flores Becker, Deputy CAO over homelessness response efforts for the county of Fresno. The item before you is a proposed policy which, if approved, will formalize the process for the county's encampment resolution actions. The purpose of establishing this policy is to ensure that the county's response process remains consistent and clear for years to come. It also establishes the CAO's office as the lead coordinator for these actions and sets best practices for other jurisdictions in our region to follow. I also want to clarify that the county has been conducting encampment resolution for years and have historically taken a humane and compassionate approach. This proposed policy is in line with our current established process for resolving encampments in the unincorporated areas of Fresno County with a few improvements. A high-level overview of the policy includes the purpose, which includes ensuring the public health and safety and welfare of its residents, which includes resolving encampments. In addition, this policy asserts that it is the responsibility of the county to ensure the response actions of encampments are conducted in a manner that is effective and respectful of the needs and rights of county residents, including those residing in the encampment. The procedure includes seven steps, which I will briefly summarize. The first step is setting the prioritization process for encampments to be resolved, and that includes two factors. One is the risk number that is assigned to the encampment, which is developed through our Encampment Reporting App that takes into consideration several factors, including proximity to school or location within a residential area, and many other factors. The other is an encampment that is reported that has five or more structures on site or, and has been in place for 10 or more days. So those are the two components that are considered in prioritization currently and in this, in this policy, in this proposed policy. Second step is confirming the existence of the encampment. Many times, we are, we get reports of encampments that are no longer in place. So our, this step involves our Sheriff's Office and the outreach team, which go out and confirm the existence of the encampment. It also includes a safety assessment of the encampment by our Sheriff's Office. I will note that if the Sheriff's Office determines that there is an imminent risk or imminent safety threat by the encampment, some or all of this process may need to be bypassed for some or all of the encampment, depending on the situation. And that is to preserve the public health and safety of residents, including those in the encampment. Fourth step, if the encampment is determined to not pose an imminent safety risk, is the noticing. Our current practice and in this policy includes a minimum of a 72-hour noticing period, where we literally go out and post notices in the encampment. Our best practice is seven days, and we try to stick to that as much as possible, depending on the situation. In addition, or I would say improvement to this step in this policy, is that we will, pending your Board's approval, start to provide notices in both Spanish and English, and we'll be sending a copy of each notice to our homeless service providing agency partners in Fresno County. Step number five is the outreach piece, and this is contingent upon available resources. So, our, this step involves our Sheriff's Office and the outreach team, which go out and confirm the existence of the encampment. It also includes a safety assessment of the encampment by our Sheriff's Office. I will note that if the Sheriff's Office determines that there is an imminent risk or imminent safety threat by the encampment, some or all of this process may need to be bypassed for some or all of the encampment, depending on the situation. Third step is the environmental health assessment, which is done by environmental health specialists of our Department of Public Health. They go out and literally assess the encampment for any environmental health issues, specifically if there's any hazardous, you know, items in the encampment. If they determine that the hazardous, that there is hazardous items on the encampment and that those pose an imminent safety risk, then similar to the safety assessment, the policy may need to be bypassed for some or all of the encampment, depending on the situation. And that is to preserve the public health and safety of residents, including those in the encampment. Fourth step, if the encampment is determined to not pose an imminent safety risk, is the noticing. Our current practice, and in this policy, includes a minimum of a seventy-two hour noticing period, where we literally go out and post notices in the encampment. Our best practice is seven days, and we try to stick to that as much as possible, depending on the situation. In addition, or I would say improvement to this step in this policy, is that we will, pending your board's approval, start to provide notices in both Spanish and English, and we'll be sending a copy of each notice to our homeless service providing agency partners in Fresno County. Step number five is the outreach piece, and this is contingent upon available resources. But this sets the expectation for outreach efforts at each encampment that the county resolves or moves towards resolution. The expectation currently is that between the dates of noticing the encampment to the resolution scheduled date, our outreach partners go out and visit and engage with the residents of the encampment at least one time, but typically, it's more than that. Currently, thanks to your board approving the pilot motel voucher program in July, our efforts are really focused on engaging folks residing in the encampment to, you know, accept a motel voucher and get them prepared to accept the motel voucher if they do indeed accept it. Step number six is the enforcement action and cleanup. And this, this step sets the parameters for the resolution of the encampment, including arrival time of all involved parties, and an expectation of allowing for voluntary compliance, which is our current practice, and the determination of personal property that needs to be stored. It also sets a minimum timeframe of ninety days for storing property and the parameters around retrieving your property. Step number seven, which is also an improvement in addition to our current process, is what to do during extreme weather events. The policy sets a process for the delay of an encampment resolution during extreme weather events at the discretion of the CAO under specific parameters. And, and so, that, that is in addition to what we currently do. To conclude, this policy was the vision of the County Encampment Resolution Work Group during the drafting of the unlawful camping ordinance. Prior to the ordinance being adopted, the work group began developing this policy, and many hours were spent thoroughly and intentionally brainstorming through each section of this proposed policy. I want to thank all of the work group team members who helped draft this policy, especially Dylan McColey, our CAO Homelessness Programs Manager, Sergeant Scott Wyshar of our Sheriff's Office, Kyle Roberson, Senior Deputy County Counsel, and the Department of Public Health, who was consulted on the extreme weather section of this proposed policy. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions your board may have.
Thank you, Amina, for that presentation. And Kyle, I see you have the resolution in front of you. Are there any additional modifications you believe need to be made to the resolution, or currently in its form, county council feels confident in how the resolution's structured? Excellent. Amina, I appreciate you working diligently, and of course, all that you've done with your office, and what Dylan has done as well to put this together. I think having procedures in place to match some of the actions that we're taking is very important. And I know here at the county, our goal is, is to provide as much care and access to individuals who find themselves homeless. That's our first priority, and I think what you've done is, is great in that regard. Any other questions or comments for staff before I open it up to the public? Alright, seeing none, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Thank you, Brandy, News Vegas. I believe that there are many unhoused people, other people who should be speaking here, and we need more time for the community to work on a policy. In addition to my comments, I'm reading Kevin Little, attorney's statement. Fresno County's newly adopted homeless encampment elimination policy, or proposed, suffers from a serious disconnect between its framework and the real-life challenges faced by the unhoused. Encampments are not just areas to be swept away. They often function as a makeshift communities that serve critical needs for those without staple housing. These encampments provide a sense of safety, support, and survival for individuals dealing with issues such as disabilities, mental health challenges, domestic violence, human trafficking, and other needs of, uniquely needs of veterans. Yet, the policy fails to account for these complexities or address what happens when the very services meant to assist the homeless are unavailable, as is often the case during, due to systematic resource shortage. The policy also neglects to provide safeguards for vulnerable populations, such as those with special needs or disabilities, who require more labor support, tailored support. There is no mentor protection for domestic violence survivors or trafficking victims, groups that need safe, trauma-informed care, similarly destruction or removal of pets and essential property, which often includes necessities for managing health, obtaining benefits, or securing housing is a glaring oversight. These actions only exacerbate the hardships faced by the unhoused, but also violate their fundamental rights and dignity. While the intent to create a more detailed policy may seem like progress, it clearly lacking the input for those who understand the lived experience of the homeless. Without this insight, the policy risks further criminalization and infringing upon the rights of people who already face extreme marginalization. A policy with more thoughtful provisions for real-world obstacles and challenges crafted with the input of those with lived experiences and homeless advocates is essential to ensure the county's efforts do not exacerbate harm or diminish the rights of unhoused. I have very little time, but I want to note that lived experience panels are extremely important, as people mentioned a lot of suggestions when I was talking that I can't go over this time. While I appreciate these statements, I do have concerns, and note that only housing is the only effective resolution to encampments, and that needs to be a focus, as well as addressing health and safety. Some suggestions that people mentioned that would go into discussion of policy is requiring outreach to come out, ensure funding, requiring that they be there if they need to be moved because of extremist situations, absolutely necessarily ADA accommodations, and that accommodation forms be given, that we talk about reasonable time, the ID, sorry, there's a little time. Note that there is concern that possessions will be protected, but there is other things that people would like to add. People noted that if they need to move, to bring bags and other containers to move their things and also help clean, there is other items as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, I'll close the public portion. Amina, do you have any, anything in addition to add? And Brandy, if you want, you can wait to see, you know, this is an important item. You came and spoke, you should probably hear what we have to say.
Yeah, so just to clarify on the outreach piece, I've stated this before, the outreach piece is really the most important part of our encampment resolution process, and a lot of what was discussed previously is, is part of what they do. They, they take a lot of time to engage with unhoused individuals that are residing in encampments and really figure out what their needs are. Not only them, but our Sheriff's Office is also, once an encampment has been identified for resolution, they show up regularly. I mean, typically, the calls that I get from our Sheriff's Officers that are on-site is, hey, this person needs this, can we get them connected to that services? It's, it's really, what I, what I mean by compassionate approach is that, right? It's all hands on deck, trying to get folks connected to what they need. And it's not perfect, and there are areas that, you know, there, there is not sufficient resources in, but, but we try our hardest to get everyone connected.
I've appreciated the compassion that your office has shown, and I know a lot of the different community-based organizations that we partner with have done a great job. And to the, you know, just to clarify some things as well, with homelessness, there, it is definitely a challenge for us, and it would be great if we had more resources. But it's a balance as we deal with homelessness and the challenges that the homeless population is facing, with also those who don't find themselves being homeless, who might want to enjoy a park or other public areas. And so, all of that has to be balanced. So, I think it's very important for the advocates out there to be mindful too, that as elected officials, we have to represent everyone throughout the entire county, the homeless and those that aren't homeless. And I think Fresno County has done a, a very good job with its efforts to coordinate, and yes, we do need more resources, but it is a balance, and I appreciate what you're doing. Any other comments that board members may have? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, Amina, I want to thank you and Dylan as well. You know, here, just a couple of months ago, this body passed no camping ordinance. But the details that you brought forth today are so important, because not all no camping ordinances are created equal, right? There's different versions of this being rolled out across the country and across the state of California. So, I do appreciate, as Chairman said, the compassion that's built in from the team that we have here, and the Sheriff's Department working. And I think that is one of the reasons why the room is not filled with anger today, because a lot of people in the activist space, they recognize the efforts Fresno County's trying to make, to, to sometimes administer tough love, but to do it as compassionate as humanly possible. And so, I think that's a testimony to the team that you guys have together, so.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second. And Brandy, thank you for being here today. I appreciate you providing those comments. We have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We now move to item number eight, under the Administrative Office, consider and take action on request for determination of public convenience or necessity in regard to application of alcohol beverage license type twenty, off-sale beer and wine, to be used at forty-seven oh six East Shields Avenue, Fresno.
Ron, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. Ron Alexander with the County Administrative Office. As mentioned before, your board today is a, an ABC license, a type twenty license for your determination of public convenience or necessity. This is a type twenty license, which is for beer and wine, is to be sold and consumed off of the premises.
Excuse me, Ron, would you speak a little bit louder?
Sorry, I'll get a little closer. Mandate Directive, twenty-four hundred, this specifies the three criteria to make to meet the public community's necessity. First one being that the license would not tend to create a law enforcement problem, that the license will provide a needed service to the community, and that the license will have a positive impact on the local economy. The applicant provided a written response addressing the three criteria, and to be of note, the clerk is bringing a revised document to your board. The applicant provided the response, which stated that there had been existing licenses at that location since nineteen eighty-four, but upon review, to, to try to show that that's correct, I noted this, there has not, never been a license at that location. So, the applicant's representative did verify that and updated the document. So, that's for your, the Department of Public Works was contacted, there are no zoning issues related to this issuance, and the Fresno County Sheriff's Department was also contacted and reviewed the application. The census, the applicant is in Census Track thirty-two zero one. There are four off-sale licenses that are allowed by ABC within this census tract. There are currently three existing off-sale licenses in this census tract. There is a moratorium on type twenty licenses. However, your board can approve public community's necessity, which will allow ABC to approve the, the application. This is a map of the census tract. As noted, the, the information there dedicated in tan, that is the census tract here, and it does show the three existing licenses. The applicant is the star, the red dots are the existing licenses. One thing to be of note is that Shields is the, the north part of that census tract. So, when I pull my information, it does not show any census tracts above that. It doesn't show the information within census tracts above that. So, there are, in addition to this, a couple more existing licenses, whether beer and wine, and possibly liquor, that are quite close, that are not depicted on this map. This also states those three, the existing licenses, and their proximity to the applicant, which is less than a mile away. This is the arrow view of the, the applicant, that they're circled is the applicant, and it does show that there is quite a bit of community housing that's in the area. This is the view of the applicant storefront. This is the north view of the applicant's site. This is the south view, east view, and the west view. And again, here are those criteria to make public community's necessity. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here. To be of note, the applicant does have a representative that prepared all the information for them, however, that, that individual did not show for the meeting.
Alright, any questions for staff? I'm gonna reserve any comments I have till after the public portion is closed. Alright, I'm gonna open up the public portion. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward, state your name at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Clarence Rivera. I live in the, I live in the area for the last twenty years. I'm against the sale of beer and wine in this location. I work for Fresno Unified. There's a school, as you've seen on the map, Scandinavian Middle School. Primos Minimark, it's been there twenty years, it's on the opposite corner. They sell groceries, they don't sell beer and wine there. There's other locations. You can go to Chestnut and Shields, AMPM, you can go to Happy Market, which was stated on there, which is Maple and Shields, you can go to Valero, Maple and Shields, you can go to Fast Strip on Clinton and Chestnut. I'm sure you can go half a mile if you want beer and wine. My concern is the kids, and I thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning, Board. John Zanoni, Sheriff, Fresno County. If you look at the map, as the gentleman just stated, there's an AMPM ARCO on the northeast corner of Shields and Chestnut, which sells beer and wine, which is not included in the census tract, because it is on the north side of Shields and not the south side. And as you can see, it is approximately a half mile from Scandinavian Middle School. If you go back over to Shields and Maple on the northeast corner, the Happy Mart also has a beer and wine license, and they are also within approximately a half mile of Scandinavian Middle School. So, essentially here, you have five places, but there's a census tract differentiation that sell alcohol that are within a half mile of a school. And I believe if you do some research, there's some cities and municipalities that do not allow the sale of beer and wine within five hundred to a thousand feet of a school. Thank you.
The applicant would like to speak, now's your time.
Hi, good morning to everyone and Board of Supervisors. My name is Tanji Singh, and I am the owner of Mega Food Mart, business located at four seven zero six East Shields Avenue, Fresno. I have seventeen years of experience working in convenience store. Almost a year ago, I buy this business and working hard to make a good store for neighborhood and our community. We add on so much stuff like hot food, coffee, ice, roller grills, grilled item, and fresh sandwich, frozen food, healthy and organic food products for groceries, items to serve our customers since we own the store. Our store is one-stop shop for customers to fulfill their daily needs from household products like pet food, medicine, feminine hygiene, et cetera, list of so long to go on. All the stores offer full line of alcoholic beverages, and we applying only ABC approval for beer and wine only according to our store need. The reason I applied for beer and wine only, because our customer only looking for beer at the store, not a much customer for alcoholic. We don't see any homeless persons inside in our precinct or store. If we see the situation like this in future, we can take care of the situation very well and calmly. We have security camera inside and outside to store twenty-four-hour surveillance for customer safety. We installed electronic age verification device to cash register, so no alcohol is served to minors, and we check ID for all these restricted products. We want to be a profitable business, and we don't want to lose our customers due to not selling beer and wine to them at this location. We have some signatures from our loyal customers and neighborhood to show that they don't have any issues to sell beer and wine at this location. That's the signatures. It's not last nor least, if we get something from community and Mega Food Mart is a neighborhood store, we can donate the five percent of our sales and beer, wine to our community back to like Fresno Police, Fire Department, sheriffs, and maybe across the street to school. And the right here is already closed, which is about three minutes drive to our East Shields Avenue. And if there is a concern for the school, so if we get it, then we can cooperate with the schools, and we can lock our beer doors when school is open and close or kids rush half an hour before and half an hour later. So, we can cooperate with everybody. Thanks, and have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Anyone else in the public wishing to comment on this item? Please step forward, state your name. Yes, you need to come forward. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Maria Mercado. I know that he and the wife for five, six years, and I know that he was present and very responsible for the thing that he wanted, and I know that he take care of the license. See you help. Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, seeing no further public comment, I'm gonna close the public portion and bring it back to the board. And Sal, this is in your district, so. And Sal, this is in your district, so I'd like to yield the floor to you so you can make any comments that you think are necessary at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of the comments that I was going to made were already spoken by our speakers, Sheriff Zanoni, Mr. Rivera. Ron, now, this, there was the original owner, I believe, of the property built a nice building there a few years back, and was going to, his intent was to open a mini-mart and sell liquor, and they came before the board requesting approval of a liquor license, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And it was denied.
That's correct.
Okay. I can, I'm very familiar with the area. Recall way back in the day, there was a Hank Swank right down the street from there. But, you know, changes in the area through the schools that have been built there. Scandinavian Middle School has been there for many years. It's right across the street from this building. And right around the corner, you also have the Atticott Elementary School. It's right around the corner. There's a lot of apartments in the area, so you have children running in and out, you know, visiting friends in the other apartments. So, it's a, it's pretty high-traffic area, not only with vehicles, but with pedestrians and children. And with the, with the, the stores that you pointed out within the immediate area, I believe that, that there's enough to service whatever needs that the neighborhoods have around there. And, you know, I think it's great if they want to open a mini-mart, that type of thing, but I don't support the liquor license. So, with that being said, I would just, just say that, that we, I'd like to make the motion to deny the application.
We have a motion to deny the application. Is there any additional, actually, do we have a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Do we have any additional comments from board members? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That denial carries unanimously.
We now move to item number nine under Public Works and Planning. Receive oral presentation attachment aid to this item from Department of Public Works and Planning concerning county of Fresno's closed regional and Reedley libraries that will be based on county's design-build procurement method using a best value basis.
And before we get into this particular item, Steve?
Yeah, this is the item that I have to recuse myself.
Perfect. And Sal's going to recuse as well? All right, so you guys will need to leave the room, and then, at this point, we're going to have staff come forward and give their presentation.
Good morning. Erin Higginson, Program Manager with Public Works and Planning, and Jenica Geder, Senior Staff Analyst. We're here to present the final ranking of the selection committee for the design-build of the new libraries in Reedley and in Clovis. This was our first design-build procurement. It's different than the traditional method in that the contract would, we were contracting with one entity to do the design and the construction. Normally, you would hire a consultant first or design in-house, and then award the project to the lowest bidder. With design-build, we can negotiate some of the design and the construction. The changes are, so at the beginning, a normal process, they would hire subcontractors ahead of time with their bid. This, and this, they'll hire subcontractors. They can hire them later, replace them later. And the project was advertised as a best value procurement, and so it's not based on the lowest priced. It's based on the highest quality or the cheapest cost and the best value to the overall, to the county. And as you can imagine, it's a lot more complicated to make sure you pick the best value and the most qualified.
So, in design-build, there's the qualification stage, and then the three most qualified are shortlisted, and then they're invited to propose, followed by the final selection and award of the contract. For these projects, the two libraries in the one contract, we received nine pre-qualification questionnaires, which were carefully scrutinized, including reference checks, financial, statement analysis, safety records, and evaluation of the design and the construction of similarly-sized and similarly-complex past projects, past libraries, or education facilities. These were ranked by the selection committee, and the shortlist was determined, consisting of Harris, Roblin, and Zumwalt, and Roblin declined to propose, and so the fourth-ranked entity there, Solpak, was invited to join the shortlist. And based on the proposals and the presentations by all three firms, the selection committee, consisting of members from capital projects, including the lead architect, representatives from the library, as well as from the CAO's office, have reviewed the proposals and have ranked them, as you can see.
So, Harris Construction Company's proposal was ranked the highest, and we have a letter in your packets to the board summarizing the findings of the committee, and they are confident that the Harris Construction would provide the best value to the county for the project. Their proposal was clear and detailed. Their architectural design approach carefully considered how the libraries will be used, especially the service desks, the children's areas, and there are suggestions in their proposal to save on maintenance costs for the long term.
Here is a rendering of the Clovis Library designed by county staff and has been approved by the library and Friends of the Library. And here's a look at the Reedley, the exterior design of the Reedley Library by the county staff, and it has been approved by the library and Friends of the Library.
And then, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The most important factor in this one, as you can see the timelines here, we've had very spirited discussions with a couple of board members. We are not committed to one library in front of the other. They're both going to run at the same time. We've had conversations with Harris Construction. I have a bias towards Clovis, 15 years over there and eight years here, so I'm going to push on that one, but the complexity of the product was going to drive the train. So, the request today has authorized the department to move forward, and myself. I will begin discussions with Harris's team this afternoon and bring it back to legal counsel. The goal is to put this in front of you on the 5th of November. Very, very aggressive schedule, but we want to get these contracts awarded, and they want to get the contracts going through the process. Through the process, we'll be making selections of what the alternatives are going to be and the like. We're also going to be integrating what we typically rely upon other departments to do for us into this project. Harris is receptive of that. Integration of the IT stuff, because the library carries its own IT department and the like. I've had long years of experience with Harris, and I think so has the supervisors, Mendez and with Supervisor Mazik. So, I think we have a picked VA team. They have a local group of contractors, a local group of designers, and we're ready to move forward with board approval. Here to answer any questions.
I got a question.
Yes.
Director, you said it comes back again in November. Why is that? I thought if we approved today, it moves forward. Why is it coming back in November?
You're selecting the contractor of choice from the design-build process. We have to negotiate final contract values and inclusions, exclusions through the process itself. We're going to put the contract in front of you for authorization of the word on the November 1st date. If that date doesn't work for some reason, then we'll bring it back at the first session in December. The goal is we have no change orders, we have no challenges like we've had in two recent projects. We go through the process and build two libraries.
Okay.
So, some general comments I have. I know that we've got representatives from Harris Construction here today. So, my, what I want to see happen is, both of these projects are very important, so Reedley and Clovis, I want to see both projects delivered at the same time. So, I know there's been some discussions in the past, not by you, but just internally, about one project maybe getting several months ahead of the other, but I'm confident that we can deliver both within weeks, if not days, of each other. So, that's what I'd really like to see, because Reedley is not less important or more important than Clovis. We've got two cities that are very important to Fresno County. So, hopefully, you're committed to driving that train very fast for both the projects. So, barring anything crazy happening, like if windows are ordered and they're on a ship somewhere, you know, out in, in the Atlantic that sinks, you know, and then we've got to reorder windows or something, I recognize that has happened in the past, but barring anything like that, I'd love to see both these projects delivered at the same time. So, with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? This is, this is an action item for us, something I'm very excited about. I'm going to tell a story after I close the public portion. Seeing no one in the public wishing to comment, I'm going to, oh, well, we now have some people wishing to comment.
Good morning, Chairman Mazik, members of the board. My name is Mike Spencer. I'm the President of Harris Construction. I'm joined today by my father, Richard, and partner in our business, and Matt Davies, who is our Vice President of Preconstruction. Matt, do you want to say a little something about, about our proposal?
Yeah, thank you. We are very excited about these, to your point, Supervisor Mazik. In our proposal, we have dedicated two different architects to this project so that we can run the projects parallel. We'll work with Steve White and his staff on the selections of the alternates, proposed additive or deductive alternates through this process so that we can move forward through the design.
You do understand this isn't a contest. You know, the Reedley Library is actually a little simpler job there, so I mean, if it rolls ahead.
Probably she comes first, yeah, yeah. Probably rolls ahead, be okay, yeah.
You shouldn't slow down on it, just.
We don't want to wait for Clovis, right?
Oh, I'm not saying slow down. You just need to push, you need to make sure that you push ahead pretty fast. So, again, I'm going to reserve the rest of my comments here till after we close the public portions. Continue, but walk cautiously.
But he's already ahead, though.
More ways than one. Any other additional comments? All right, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion. Any additional comments that you guys would like to make? I have one. So, Clovis has been waiting for a new library ever since, hmm, I think probably 2001.
I was there.
I know. I think you, you got hired in Clovis in 2002 or '03, which? You were, okay, hired in 2001 as well. So, yes, it's been promised to the city of Clovis. It makes me very happy to see that this day is here where we are selecting a contractor, and we're going to have shovels in the ground, because looking back at the 23-plus-year period that has, you know, that has run since then, it's almost seemed like this, we would never get to this particular day. So, looking forward to putting shovels in the ground, and also, the eventual ribbon-cutting is too, is very important to me and the citizens of Clovis. So, with that, I will entertain a motion for staff's recommendations.
I will make a motion, but I will throw this one caveat, that I think Reedley has been waiting just as long, and most of the slowdown of that project in Clovis has been caused by the city of Clovis.
And Mr. Chairman, I won't even add that Highway City is next in line and won't throw a wrinkle into this, because Highway City wasn't part of the group. But being the reasonable person that I am, and I don't think we've been waiting 20 years, but we're, we're getting close to that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we move this item forward with the understanding, my caveat, that Highway City is next in line. So, that's my motion.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, that was my motion.
Then I'll, then I'll second Supervisor Mendez.
All right, we've got a motion and a second, because I don't want to get between these two when they wrestle. I'll just stand back. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And we have, it passes three with two abstentions. So, good luck.
Staff is going to grab the other two board members. We now move to item number 10 under Public Works and Planning. Receive presentation by the Department of Public Works and Planning on the 2024 Regional Active Transportation Plan.
Erin Higginson with the Department of Public Works and Planning. I'm here to present to you today the 2024 Regional Active Transportation Plan. This is a transportation plan that Fresno COG was the lead on, and Fresno County participated in, and it includes one chapter that is many of our unincorporated areas. It's a tool or a roadmap to identify ways to improve walking and bicycling conditions in the whole, throughout the region, and there are projects, this doesn't represent that these projects are necessarily going to be done or that they're funded, but they're, it's a plan. So, Fresno COG hired consultants and staff from member agencies helped with this, and our goal is to provide more accessible sidewalks, shared youth paths, bike lanes, improve street crossings, and other types of improvements. So, there was a 2018 Regional ATP adopted by Fresno COG, but the county, we did not adopt that plan. So, this will be the first time we've adopted an active transportation plan. We had a bicycle plan adopted back in 2013, but this is, so this is a very updated plan. This one has additional information about disadvantaged communities, safety data, and land use plans. And we will use this plan to identify projects for future funding. It doesn't mean if a project isn't in the plan that we can't do it, but it's, it's a guide to apply for grants. So, the unincorporated communities that are specifically included in this plan are Biola, Kintuah Creek, Carruthers, Delray, Easton, Frye, Leighton, Raisin City, Riverdale, and Tranquility. And there are other communities we know are not included, and we plan to include them in future updates to the plan. Obviously, there's just so much infrastructure that they're, they're not specifically in here, and we are going to add them over time. These cities are part of the regional ATP, except for the ones that are starred. They actually have their own plan. Fresno, Clovis, Reedley, and Selma have their own specific plan. And here's an example of kind of what the plan shows. So, you see this, this exhibit, so you can look at, say, Biola, for example, and on the yellow, you can see, hey, they have a sidewalk on both sides of the street. Or, I'm sorry, yellow, they have it only on one side, blue, they have it on both sides. And then, there's not much green, but if there were green, there's a shared use path. So, then you can see everywhere, say, that's gray, there's no sidewalks. So, that is where we would look to identify and potentially build sidewalks in the areas that are missing. And this one is the same thing, but with biking facilities, and you can see that it's mostly gray. There aren't a lot of bicycling facilities in these unincorporated communities. It doesn't mean there should be on every street, it's just identifying that there aren't, and may, there may or may not need to be. This is just the collision, so in, you know, a five-year period, there are 135 injury collisions reported involving a pedestrian and 103 involving a bicyclist, and 11% of these collisions resulted in a fatality. This plan was approved through, Fresno COG did a SEQA process on this project. They did an initial study, and had a mitigated negative declaration. And with your board's approval, you're just approving that we have a commitment to the Active Transportation Plan, and it will allow us to apply for grants. We need to have an approved plan to be eligible for ATP funding, which has been a significant source of funding for the past few years for sidewalk and other types of projects. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Erin, a quick question I have for you, looking at the collision data. Is this data only within the unincorporated area, or does it also include the 15 cities as well?
This is just unincorporated.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
If it was cities, you'd see a lot higher, there's a lot higher numbers.
Yes, Sal.
Okay, Erin, in looking at your presentation and the papers you gave us, one of the pages is, of course, the unincorporated communities that were not included, and is that, is that because of higher needs in the other areas that were chosen and the monies, or?
Not necessarily. It's that we... It's that we, we didn't pay for the plan to be done. Fresno Cog paid for it out of their funding, and they only, they limited us to a certain number of communities. And it doesn't necessarily mean they have higher needs. We have to really do the analysis to know who has higher needs. So we, we have some other grants that I took to you a couple of weeks ago and that will help us start to study some of those other communities, so.
Because I also noticed even, wasn't even mentioned was the Mayfair area.
Right.
That's not even in here as far as an unincorporated community or anything, so just might want to add it to the, to the list as well.
Absolutely. There's, there's a lot of need everywhere, so this is sort of a first step, but we can't claim that this is everything. This is not 100% comprehensive, but we hope to get there.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you look at all the unincorporated areas, I don't know the exact number, but it's got to be technically close to 100, you know, some that are recognized that are, you know, Prather, Auberry, you know, you look at Dunlap, Miramani Pinehurst, and then there's some that maybe only have 50, 100 people in them that have, you know, their own recognized name for their community. So yeah, there's a lot more we can add. I'm glad that we're starting with a few, and then from here, going to grow it quite a bit because I think about Tarpe Village as well, which I represent, and it's 100% taken care of by the county. So I know that there's a lot of opportunity in that small community in my district as well. So with that, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, bring it back to the board for action.
Motion approved.
We have a motion as second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Was that Supervisor Brandau who made that second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We now move to item number 11, Board Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Supervisor Pacheco, any comments? Supervisor Quintero?
Yes. This past weekend, I, I attended a, an event over at, and Supervisor Brandau was there. So we both attended an event at Pinedale Elementary School, and what it was, was a, the naming of the Freeway 41 at, at Alluvial Crossing is going to be named in honor of Ambassador Philip Sanchez. And I wanted to thank Assemblymember Patterson for bringing it forward on the state level. It was sponsored by, who was it? Supervisor Sigma Chi Fraternity?
Yes, exactly.
Do you want to pick it up from there? It's your.
Yeah, I will, I'll make a few comments on that when, when we get down to me.
Okay, and, but anyway, it's, the ambassador was, was an old friend of our families, and that's how I was able to get the invitation. But it was very heartfelt and long overdue for the ambassador. He, of course, served as, as ambassador through, US ambassador for three countries, was also the editor and publisher of two, of two international newspapers based out of New York. And it's, like I said, it was long overdue and well deserved, and I really wanted to applaud Assemblymember Patterson and Sigma Chi Fraternity for bringing it forward. You had a part of that as well, Supervisor, so just wanted to say that it'll be coming up pretty soon, be put up.
Excellent. Thank you.
Steve, go, since he's on the same subject.
Yes.
All right, Steve, go.
So I'll tag team with that. And Sal, you did a great job presenting. Sal's had a friendship with Ambassador Sanchez where I only got to shake his hand one time. And so it was really interesting to meet the family. And also, he was the youngest ever CAO of Fresno County and still holds that record for State of California. And Paul Nerlin there is like twice his age, so there's no threat, no threat of that at all. But it was wonderful, and there's going to be some 11-foot-long signs placed on 41 near the Alluvial area. They haven't quite determined exactly where they're going, but, but they'll recognize Ambassador Sanchez. So I, I think it's a wonderful way. And then just recently, a new Clovis Unified School was named after the ambassador as well. So a lot of great recommendation there. So, and Sal, you did a great job because you got to talk of your longtime friendship with the ambassador. I'll just mention a couple of other things. Chairman, you did a fantastic job at the state of the county, and I know it was well-received in the community. I heard from many, many people who said it was a fantastic presentation, so thank you. Here about a week ago, with a lot of help from Sonia Dosti and Paul Nerlin was there as well, we did a rollout of the Neighborhood Watch signs in District 2. This is something this body voted on here several months ago, and it was a partnership with the Neighborhood Watch Program, Mary Haskin, and then also input from, and Sheriff Zenoni was supportive, and the funding that we gave them to create the signs, we began rolling out these signs. And so the communities really enjoy them. It's a fantastic new-looking sign, and so it was a great press conference. And then finally, I had a Fig Garden Homeowners Association Dinner last Sunday night, and they have a brand-new president. I've been working with a guy named Dean Alexander for as long as I can remember, but they finally have a new president that stepped into that role. Her name's Angie Hyatt. They, they had a fantastic evening. The sheriff and I were there, and they won, I let them know about the vote that we took to support Christmas Tree Lane Walk Nights. I let them know Supervisor Pacheco about your support of that, and they were thrilled because they feel like the county understands that that's a, a great regional amenity. So they're very supportive and thankful. So just wanted to mention those things. Thank you.
Tomorrow, I'll start attending the, the CSAC Board of Directors Retreat, and there's always some very interesting opinions there about not only state policy or federal policy from the other board members. So that'll be very entertaining. I also want to comment that the state of the county was a, a great event. It kind of showed the counties on track, and I just want to say that there's some political ads that say Fresno County's at a crossroads, and I think somebody better give those guys some directions because I think they're lost. So I think.
Knee bums.
Yeah. So I think, you know, that was a great event, and it showed, you know, that we are, you know, the ship is sailing in the right direction. And you did a, a great job.
Thank you.
And when I got up on the stage afterwards with you, I, seemed like that was a tough assignment by the lights that shake, that came down on the podium there. That was pretty tough.
It was bright.
Yes.
But having all of you there, being supportive, was very helpful, and all the great things that happened here at the county. It's not one man, it's not one woman, it's not one department, it's all of us rowing in the same direction. And it was an honor for me to have an opportunity to really brag on all the great things happening here at the county. And I think it opened a lot of eyes. Most people weren't aware of the stories that were being told, the things that the county had done, and I think that we need to continue to work hard at sharing the message of what Fresno County does because it is, it's transforming lives. But I appreciate all of you very much, and I know that Sal has something else he'd like to share.
I agree with my colleagues. It was a very good presentation, covered a lot of, a lot of the good things that are happening with the county of Fresno, as well as the challenges and how we're facing them. Also, I'd like to just make mention the recent passing of a gentleman by the name of Don Blosser. He was, he was the owner of Blosser Sporting Goods, if you recall that business, and Blosser's and Mid Valley Sports were the two big ones in Fresno County. They provided a lot of the athletic uniforms for a lot of the high schools, the colleges as well. But Don Blosser was also a, a big community-minded person, had a great heart, gruff on the exterior, but always willing to help out and make Fresno better, so he'll be sorely missed. Thank you.
Couple of quick comments. I attended the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of Counties in Bakersfield. I will note that Buddy Mendez is going to be chairman next year, and he's going to have the pleasure of hosting this particular group. And really appreciate the CAO's office getting an early start, trying to figure out what that's going to look like. I thought Bakersfield, as the host city, and Kern County being the host county, did just a fantastic job. It was very fun, the different seminars, learning about infrastructure, energy, legislative update was quite informative. And then some of the action items that we took on Friday dealt with kind of dealing with connectivity and working together as a region to apply for funding at the federal level to make sure that some of our rural parts of the county have an opportunity to enjoy internet services. So it was unanimous that we all want to work together on some applications, and hopefully here, very soon, we'll have some action items and maybe get some funding with the next round of funding that's going to be coming up. But definitely, we're stronger when we work together. Also, I wanted to comment, Big Fresno Fair is taking place. I think it ends on October 14th, but on Wednesday last week, when it kicked it off, our very own Sal Quintero got to emcee the opening ceremonies, which I thought was great. And we had a great turnout from all of you. I know that many of you attend the horse races as well that take place there, but 141 years of the fair, which is amazing. And I think it's important for us to reminisce about these things. We need to remember our roots, where we came from, or else we're going to forget who we are. And it seems like we live in an, an age right now where everybody's so busy, everybody's trying to reinvent themselves, but, and all of that's fine, but we always have to remember where we came from. And the Fresno Fair, what it stands for, what it's done through the years, has, has been a big part of Fresno County, so that was exciting to, to be a part of. And that is all I have, so let's move on to the next item.
Item number 12, Board Appointments.
Any board appointments? Any? Yes, Supervisor Pacheco.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Mr. Ruben Coronado to the Assessment Appeals Board, replacing Scott Rook in the District 1 position for a term ending September 6, 2027.
All right, any other appointments? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on the appointment? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Before we entertain a motion on that, I want to make the public aware, too, that on October 10th, Channel 24 will be showing the state of the county at 7:00 PM. So if you weren't able to attend that event, you can watch on TV what took place at the state of the county. Again, October 10th, 7:00 PM, Channel 24. So is there a motion for the appointment? We've got a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion as second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And that carries unanimously.
We now move to item number 13, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on items not on the agenda? Hello.
My name is Vanoush. I'm here to speak about the outrageously great PG&E, affecting every person who lives in the county of Fresno. On behalf of PG&ENow.com.
A grassroots organization. Our next meeting is October 14th at 5:30 PM at Granite Park Yosemite Falls Cafe. Some objectives that we're looking at is three. CPUC is more accountability. It's an appointed position by the governor. We like to make that into a voted position. Two, specifics on this rate reduction that CEO Patty Popey speaks about. When is the end date? We fear another high-speed rail, the money pit, the train to nowhere, the gift that keeps giving. Number three, is this a monopoly council? Price gouging, unfair business practices, FTC maybe should get involved, partnerships with other counties that Nathan alluded to earlier. So I have some facts for you. We have had a 100% increase in bills since 2019. Not a big secret. Your own personal households, families are probably feeling the sticker shock with the bulk of the increases the last 13 months. PG&E has 16 million customers, businesses, households, and yes, county buildings, which I'm sure you have to factor into your annual budget, the high costs. That's a population in California of 40 million. That's a big chunk there being affected. Your bill accounts for 32% going to actual rate usage. 68% is fees, infrastructure, upgrades, repairs, junk fees, we call them, yada, yada, PG&E inefficiency. The rates and increases in your bills are decided by the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, an appointed commission by the governor. Brace yourself, they've just voted in another increase. The CEO of PG&E is Patty Popey, who came to California as the new CEO in 2021 from Michigan. She has a mechanical engineering degree, had a long career at General Motors before a two-year stint at the local Michigan Power Company before applying as CEO of PG&E California. Her employment contract was kind of a sweet deal. I by no means begrudge anybody making a lot of money, but not at the sake of so many people hurting. The stories I hear are so tragic. Popey negotiated 55 million her first year. To date, she's valued at 82 million. We are seeking advocates here. San Joaquin County, your colleagues up there, Supervisor Robert Rickman is raising holy hell. We are recommending that you review Channel 10's investigative journalism called Fire, Power, and Money. It really digs deep into the CPUC, State of California, and PG&E, or else the Devil's Triangle.
Thank you, Vanoush.
Okay. And I have some swag for you guys.
If you'd like, you can give it to the clerk, and she will make sure we get it. We thank you very much for your comments.
Want to comment real quick? You're preaching to the choir here, so we, we think we're getting took and also.
Taken to the cleaners, absolutely. Seeing no further public comment, I'll close the public portion. What do we have next?
Received public comment for closed session items 14 through 20.
Anyone in the public wishing to comment on any closed session items? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Counsel, are we going to need to report back out after closed?
Mr. Chairman, we do not anticipate any announcements following close, so if the board chooses, it would be appropriate to adjourn following closed session.
Excellent. So is there a motion to do just that, adjourn following closed session?
So.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion as second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That carries unanimously. We will adjourn following closed.